All right, welcome back. We are on D, which is a motion to affirm, reverse, modify the superintendent's decision regarding discipline of the student, whereas the Board of Education has discussed and considered the appeal of a disciplinary matter involving a particular student or students, and whereas the Board of Education reviewed the record of the superintendent's hearing and the appeal letter submitted by the student's parent, and whereas the Board of Education has considered and deliberated regarding the appeal. Now therefore, may I have a motion to affirm, reverse, modify, as will be indicated in communication to the parents, the superintendent's decision regarding the discipline of the student? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Regal, can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Landby.
This motion will show that it will be a modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
A motion to authorize the board president to communicate the board's decision to the student's parents. Could I have a motion to authorize the board president to communicate the board's decision to the student's parents? Motion, please.
So moved.
Ms. Benedict, could I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, we're going to resume our BOE meeting. Any public to be heard?
No.
My turn. Good news. From a high school, Elena Velz. I found Phil Young fixing a student's bike after he noticed them riding into school broke. He goes above and beyond to care for our students. I think that's awesome. From JK, Danielle Worth. A huge thank you to the staff that put together and participated in our annual JK Holiday Sing-Along. And then, first time I've ever seen a student on our good news, Brody Havens. It's very uplifting getting the Friday dog visits. Then it lightens my day, and I can see it puts smiles on other students too, so thank you. And there's plenty of good news to read, so please have at it and take a look at it. We now have a public hearing to consider revisions to the 2024-2025 Batavia City School District Code of Conduct. Did that be you, Mr.?
Ms. West.
Ms. West, okay.
Okay, so we're just, this is the agenda. We're going to go over the background information. We'll talk about the current language that we do have in the code of conduct. We'll offer the proposed changes, and then we'll ask for some feedback. Okay, I apologize. So why are we discussing these changes? So as a follow-up to a recent incident that happened to VHS, the district-wide safety committee met at our scheduled meeting, admins, teachers, staff, police, security aides, it's quite a diverse group of people. We met formally and unanimously recommended that VHS re-implement the no backpack in the hall rule, which was in place prior to COVID. So our language, it's still in there. It says students are expected to place coats and backpacks and bags in their lockers before the first period of the day. To be honest, I think after COVID, a lot of students were still carrying their book bags. They said that it felt comfortable to them, and we just weren't really doing too much with it. So based on what happened the other day, we've also just been thinking quite deeply about safety. So we would like to change the words in order to be able to implement this with full effect in our school. So we would like students to be required to place their coats, their blankets, their backpacks, and their bags in their lockers before the first day, period. Always understanding that students have different needs, and so at any time, if there is a student that does have a particular reason that they would have to carry a backpack, we would certainly seek a medical exemption. That's standard in other schools. They can do that through a 504 plan in multiple ways. So essentially, we're just really asking that we're able to take that word "expected" and put in the word "required," and then also, believe it or not, add the word blankets and coverings, because kids are very much in the habit of carrying those types of things around. And at the end of the day, we're really just looking to just increase some of those safety measures and help us to kind of get back into some of the protocols that we've had before COVID. That's just really the changes that we're closing.
Any questions?
I'm assuming that the students have plenty of time in between their blocks, classes, whatever.
Yes, I'm gonna say I am pleasantly surprised that it's gonna work out for us, because we have six minutes per passing time, and that is plenty of time to get through. We also have some protocols in place, so we recognize that this is gonna be a big change for some of our students. They really haven't done this for most of their high school career. So we will have lots of people who can assist them. We're gonna ask the teachers to obviously understand the first week or two is going to be a little bit of a hassle. We're not looking to, you know, harm kids while they're getting used to this. We want to be able to help them. We're also gonna put some posters on just on how to remember how to do your locker. We've ordered some extra of those locker keys, so our adults and our hall monitors will have those on standby, so kids don't just keep bumping into like ad nauseam frustration. And we're really just trying to like pre-think through all of those initial things that are just gonna feel like a big lift for young people. I will pleasantly report that many of the young people that I've kind of meted this with and shared that this may be coming down the pike if we're able to do it, they seem to be okay with it, because I do think that, you know, some of the things that have happened, it's just helped us all rethink, you know, making sure that we're just tightening up our protocols.
This was a policy before COVID, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it's really just changing that one word and then truly reinforcing it.
One would go back in to effect?
So we would like to, if passed, we would like to, again, officially tell the staff and the students tomorrow morning, and then we would take the rest of this week and the rest of next week. We would say it's in effect, but it's in effect with working, right? So we have given all the kids, today, we sent out their schedules again in the first class, they all have their lockers. So again, we are certainly anticipating it'll be a little bit of a lift, but just like anything in teenage land, we got this. So we're gonna put all the things in place. So we're gonna try to implement it right away.
What are your thoughts on it?
I mean, I've talked to a lot of students about this, and like, I'll be honest with you, we're not really a big fan of it. And like, I do, like, I really appreciate like the intention of like obviously keeping the school safer, but I just don't really see it as a viable solution. Like, so I feel like, I don't wanna get like hypotheticals here, but I feel like even if we didn't have backpacks, it wouldn't stop the incident, and like, it doesn't stop people bringing in things to the school. So like, I feel like it just kind of seems like a knee-jerk reaction, and like, I don't, I'm just obviously not really a fan. I think it's kind of inconvenient for students.
And Cam, I'm gonna absolutely understand that. Your voice, that's a thing that some students are really feeling. I would just, from a principal's perspective, certainly there's always some things that can go wrong, right? But I think that if we can tighten up some of it, it just, it gives us some more stopgap places to hold tight and to try to put some of these protocols in place. But I certainly understand, and I'm sure many students will feel the way that you do too. It is going to feel like an inconvenience to some of us for sure.
I just like, I'm sorry, I just like don't necessarily see like, because like obviously we're doing it because of like the most recent incident, but I just feel like it's not a solution to it, so I don't really know why we're...
Well, so, you know, Cam, it's not a D solution, right? As Ms. West said, you know, we obviously can't prevent everything, right? But it's a step, right? I mean, accidents happen, people go to stop signs, accidents happen, right? I mean, but it's just, it's designed to be a step to make the school safer. That's the rationale behind it.
And also from the administration perspective, it's gonna be easier for us to actually monitor some of that, right? So we're, we don't wanna go to like detectors or things like that at this point, because we don't feel like that's necessary. But this is one of those in-between measures to try to be able to manage it a little bit better. It's very difficult when there's just backpacks all over and in all classrooms too. So this isn't really just meant to kind of give us a place to start and to make sure that, you know, it's a one entry place that we know where it's gonna be happening.
I just can't believe that you students wanna haul all your books around with you all the time.
It's like significantly easier, honestly. Like, cause like I was doing it in the middle school, cause like we're kind of, my grade and maybe the other one might be the only class that like did use lockers, but like it's, it's so much easier, and especially like with Health Academy, like when that ends, like I have lunch. If I'm going to my locker, like I have, I have missed lunch before. Like if I'm going to my locker, like there's a chance I might not make it there, and I'm like, I have like our classes and a lot of students have other classes like that. It's just like so much easier.
But I, I appreciate the fact that you guys had a safety committee meeting, and you saw, you know what, this is something we can implement now. Is it convenient? No, it's not convenient. My daughter, she was, she's okay with it. It's, it's a way to be safer. And I think that you had staff and admins, teachers, security aides, police.
Yes.
I think it's just one small step in response to the situation. I think it's, I think it's great. Sorry, Cam?
No, you're, I just, I'm worried that students are gonna view it as like punishing the whole group for the actions of some, it's like...
So I, yeah, so I, I could just, I don't, you know, I hear what you're saying, Cam. It's not a punishment, it's an opportunity to make the school safer.
Right, yeah.
That's what, it's not a punishment, and we're not in the business of punishing kids, right? We want the school to be safe and a safe place to learn.
No, yeah, of course, I'm just like...
I understand, I understand that though, too. I hear what you're saying.
We needed your voice to represent the people, right? Absolutely, we understand. Any other questions or anything else?
All good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Ms. Benedict, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, next up, BCSD Foundation Introduction of a New Director, Shannon Maude. Did I say that correctly?
You did not. That's okay. Maude.
Maude. Sorry, I apologize.
No, that's okay, it's common.
All right, so I'm Zach, I'm the president of the foundation. One of the great gifts I had being on board was getting involved with the foundation, so other than I left the board, it's one thing I maintain, so I'm pretty proud of it. What I will say is, I'll try to keep this under 20 minutes. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Really, it's probably five slides. And basically, just give me a quick, super high overlook of what the foundation does, how Shannon's joining our group to really escalate us into the future, and what we got planned, so we got some really fun events people are gonna wanna know about. So I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with our mission statement, but basically, there it is. Basically, our number one job is to caretake our scholarship money and also find other ways and resources to help out the school district financially or in a lot of different things. So a lot of people aren't aware of everything we do, but we write grants, we filtrate money to help out with like Mr. Batavia, so on and so forth. So next slide. These are active members. Looks like Mr. Regal may be joining us in a swap-out for Alex, we're pretty excited about that. Our special meeting is tomorrow. And then obviously, Nick Bestine's on there. Jessica, she's been helping out a lot, thank you Jessica, especially transition from Julia. And obviously Jason, Andrew, so on and so forth. We don't have her on the side, but as of now, Shannon, you know, the next slide, is our new executive director. So Shannon, you wanna say a couple words about yourself?
Sure, sure. Yeah, my name is Shannon Maude, and right now, my job is the executive director of the Downtown Batavia Business Improvement District, we like to say BID, because it's really long and awful. For those of you who do not know what that is, I create events and raise money, I do grants for Downtown Batavia to try to help bring people downtown, make it look nice. I do the beautifications, we do the flowers, the banners, the flags, all while trying to make it appealing to get people back downtown instead of going out of town. We would really like to get more things moving, instead of kids moving away, although, you know, we love to send them off to college, do great things, but come back, open a business, stay local, and just build what we have started. I've lived in Batavia my entire life, and a lot of my friends could not wait to get out, and I've always liked it, I've always been a small town. But I, I don't know, I have always been really interested in the community. When Zach approached me on the foundation, I was pretty, I was pretty excited about it, because I love the school, again, it's the community. But I thought what I could bring to the foundation was an awareness. And right now, a lot of people aren't aware of the foundation and what it does. It does a lot of great things, and I would love to help raise money for it. We have fun events, so not only would it bring in money, but it would create events, and my whole goal is just the community, more community involvement, getting people involved, letting people know we're here, and have fun in the process.
So one of the coolest parts is the crossover. Sharon brought me the bid, I brought her over here, and one of the cool parts is, I know you guys are all aware of the Derby that happens in Ellicott, so great news. The bid is not on the park, so it only made sense for us to now be able to house this under the foundation. This is a huge fundraiser, actually makes a lot of money. So Shannon's literally, we released it from the bid, and now it's gonna come over. So it's a big new event that we have for the foundation this year, super excited about it, can't wait for Jackson to get involved. It's gonna be great. Super cool. Another great thing, just to go over, she brings her back, the back shoot of like grant writing, that kind of stuff. Other thing, thanks to Jason, which the board has talked about, is right now, for the Hall of Fame, we have great stuff for people that are athletes, musicians, but we don't have anywhere to house anybody that's a CEO of JP Morgan, you know what I mean? Not saying we do, but we did, right? So the foundation's gonna move forward with establishing a Hall of Fame. That would be for distinguished alumni, also potentially doing a gala at the city center, using art, that kind of stuff. All of these are fundraisers, so one, get our name out there. Two, honor our alumni, but three, all at the same time, raise funds. So in the future, when the school needs X amount or whatever, we would be able to help support you guys, because we have access funds to do that. Or if we found a scholarship that people recognize that we need more funds for, we have access funds to do that. Last year, we managed 46 scholarships, was the first year we ever held an event, like a full, full event, and made money. It was a lot of work, Jason is this true, a lot of meetings. Thank you, Jason and Andrew. We got through, actually, Chris White, or, I'm sorry, Kirkwood was the winning team. Allison's family, they brought two bikes and gave them away on a 50/50 raffle, thank you Alice. And yeah, it was a great time, we had the end of the year get, get together, it was fantastic, a lot of attendees. All the birthday king knows. A little inside joke there, but no, it was a good time. These are some pictures of the events, that's actually from last year. This is one of our sponsors, so we also had sponsors for the hockey game, which is great. So we had vendors linked up, we raised just from our vendors $2,000, so it was pretty cool. And then, this year, March 9th is the big thing. We're gonna do the hockey event again, it's in conjunction with the Muck Dogs, they help do the promotions. We're gonna do the same thing, we're gonna have some staff's gonna be in it, some alumni's gonna be in it, it's gonna be blue versus white, make sure you come out. End of the year, time to announce, Nick Bestine, he helps out with this event. We're gonna do a big end of the year hangout, Eli Fish, and then I told you all, because we got the boxer, we've announced the soap derby.
Soapbox derby.
Soapbox derby. And how can you help? We're already at the end. Well, donate, donate, I can collect cash now if you want. Just kidding.
I know, I know.
No. The biggest thing is honestly, we just wanted a little awareness, honesty about our events, so please, feel free to come out to the hockey game on March 9th, support our brand awareness. And the other thing that we do, to facilitate, is nominate the Apple Award. If you still run that, we can nominate anybody in the, any staff member, you can just simply put it in a nomination form, it's approved, we give them an apple, and it gives a little recognition to the staff as well. I don't have a question, I don't have a slide for questions, but by all means, I'm offering questions if not. But I really appreciate you guys taking the 10 minutes out of your day, just so you guys understand what we do and where we're trying to go, and really kind of support you guys as well, I really mean that. Like, our little mission is to support the school, so...
I love the "support our brand awareness," that is probably my favorite line up there. Getting kids involved, parents involved, just really getting the name out there. Any of the events that we do, we should be including students as well as the parents, not just, you know, the same volunteers that tend to do it, but to really, really get everyone involved. And I think it's great for the Soapbox Derby, we did a registration at the school at John Kennedy last year, and that worked out really well, but now joining with the foundation and moving that over here, I just think that will be a smoother transition, it's just a better fit. It's, the kids go nuts, and I don't know if any of you remember it, back in the day when dating myself, but it was here when I was a kid and before, and everyone said, you have to do it, you have to do it. And now that it's back, people have begged me just to continue it and not lose it. So that is a big one, and I think that will only grow at Centennial Park. You can make it into a whole, like a 4th of July, how they used to do a picnic in the park, that's always been my vision. You get vendors in, you have music, all while raising money, and I think that's huge.
Yeah, for sure. And I just wanted to say, on behalf of the whole staff, everybody that's helped out on the foundation, we're unspoken here, as I always joke, I mean, people put hours and hours and hours. I mean, last year, I probably worked, I don't know, 200 hours on the foundation, so there's a lot of work that goes into it, and we really, the number one thing is still paying scholarships, so I do wanna thank everybody else that's been a part of that, so we're excited about this year. Any last questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Jackson and Robert Morris School Update. Ms. Lataro.
Yeah.
Ms. Lonn. Ms. Grisilius.
Well, thanks for having us. We go through our presentation, I tried to make it exciting for you, so I don't tell you the same thing year after year. This is our dream team, admin team. Lovely school picture. Jackson over Robert Morris, and that's them itself. So our mission and vision statements, we worked with our shared decision team, making team, to create a good mission and vision that talks about fostering a safe environment where every child learns. When I thought about this presentation, one word that came to mind was intentional. So what we do at our schools is very thought out and very intentional, and you'll see when we talk more about PLCs, it's taught me, myself, as an instructional leader, how to be more intentional with what I'm doing, so we make sure that every student can learn and nobody's left behind. So our mission and vision statement, we really stand by it. I think the one line that also sticks out is "the nurturing environment where curiosity blooms." If you could see them jump off the bus excited to learn, I'm there every day, I was sick last week and I wasn't there for a couple days, and they were like, where did you go? What happened to you? So I try to make that day, when they get off that bus, Krista does the back door, I do the front door, and I welcome them every morning the same way. So I think that's important, keep them with that love of school, so they grow confidence and they really, really wanna be there. So our kids love school. Our strategic plan, you've seen this before, what we're focused on, our safe and collaborative culture, we want all students to have equitable opportunities and access to learning. We have so many great things in place that we do along the way. I always say this, getting our eyes early on the students at UPK is very important, making sure that we give them what they need during their transition from Robert Morris to Jackson. Some of them come in with absolutely no school experience, maybe just daycare, and then they come to Robert Morris, they get a robust education, they come up through us, and we start those early literacy, the early literacy learning, and bringing top-notch instruction to Robert Morris and Jackson. So PLCs, like I said, intentional, and that's what I learned. We went to our second institute, I went to one in Phoenix, then I went to the one in Rochester, and I stepped away and I felt so invigorated by it, even though I had seen it a couple years prior. It really gives teachers a jumping off point, and to me, it's about collaboration. So teachers aren't working in isolation, they're digging into their data, they're looking at their common formative assessments, they're really working hard to make sure that all kids are getting exactly what they need. So you'll see, we attended the Solution Tree Conference in Rochester, all of our administrators, all of our teams, our coaches. We did a master schedule overhaul, I love to master schedule, I love to make sure that we're using as much instructional time as possible. Some people love the new schedule, some people don't like it, but it maximizes our instructional time with collaborating with our special area teachers for, you know, to make sure that they can support special teachers as well. So one thing when we overhauled the master schedule was that collaboration called something called WIN, which is what I mean, where students are in grouped intentionally based off data from assessments that, from standards that teachers choose. So we have a guiding coalition in place, where we have a group of administrators, coaches, and teachers, and department chairs, that get together and talk about how can we best support this PLC collaboration. I know some of you have sat through some of the board presentations from Solution Tree, and the presenters are dynamic. Every time we sit through a different collaboration with them, we all learn something new. We had one last week on comment, on assessments that I walked away thinking, wow, it's always something they give you that you can implement right away, and that's what I love about it. And there's handouts, and there's a hub, and it's, it's really helpful for us as leaders. So in fall, we did the master schedule rollout. Every single teacher in our schools is in some sort of PLC. So from UPK preschool, kindergarten, first grade, to special areas, what they do is, they look at the, at the standards, they pick seven to 12 standards, they analyze the data, they come up with assessments, they talk about how students do, they base, they put kids in WIN groups, and discuss new strategies, and just share. So again, they're not working in isolation, so they're being very intentional about unpacking the standard, reflecting on the standard, writing learning targets, creating an assessment, giving the assessment, getting together, looking at the data, who fell down, who already knows this, what do we do for those kids that already get it? So, like I said, intentional.
What I would just add is, what I like about this, is that the PLCs is really giving us that driving force to meet our mission and vision, which is pretty robust, right? So it's a deep shift on focusing on student learning versus teaching, which we're all passionate about our lessons and our teaching, but really we come back to, what is the most recent evidence that demonstrates our students are truly learning? And that's that shift that kind of keeps us focused in our PLC, and it's a challenge every day, but that's just something that was a big aha to me when it came to really instilling those PLCs.
Yeah, and that's a great, a good point too, because you have students that already know what you're teaching, right? But you have kids in the middle, and you have kids that are behind. What about those kids that already know it? So with PLCs, it's intentional, because then you enrich them on the standard they might, you know, maybe they chose a standard of counting of one to 20, and those kids came into kindergarten knowing how to count to 100. So what do you do with them? Do you, do they sit in the, in the classroom, or do we take them intentionally and enrich them, and give them exciting opportunities throughout the school day to learn how to, to be enriched? So it just allows teachers, you know, a way to make sure that everybody's getting what they need. So we started with our math instruction two years ago, we're in year two of PLC process. All students, you know, we do a lot of things, they get screened, we collect so much data to give this literacy profile, a math profile, and we work vertically, Paul and I work vertically with JK, to talk about even what module do we need them to get to by the time they get to John Kennedy? Do we need them to get through geometry? What's important? What's intentional? What can we combine? So what they do when they identify the essential standards is, they pick those bolder standards that show up in all of the math modules, and they talk about what's really important, and that's where they dig in and get very intentional about exactly what they need to do in the math instruction. So these four questions, you'll, you'll probably hear every principal talk about them from Solution Tree, what we want all students to know and be able to do, how do we know if they learn it, how will we respond if they don't, those are those WIN groups, and then how are we going to extend that learning for students that already know how to do it?
I'd just add, like, they really are our anchors, right? Like, and it challenges our teams to really discuss, like, what is it that I'm holding onto because I really love, or what is it that's really gonna drive student learning? So it's just, I love the fact that the PLCs anchors us back to really focus on our true vision and mission, which are our kids, and that they are all learning. So again, we do collect a lot of data, a lot of our focus is on math and ELA in our PLCs, and really just... PLCs, and really just kind of like digging into, what are those essential standards? So like at UPK, we're looking at, what are this, what are those essential standards that kindergarten is focusing on, that we are going to assist in having our preschool students really focus on those and kind of like transition to that kindergarten? We went early in October, we took a field trip. We used feedback that we received from the state last year on our learning centers in UPK, and as a PLC, we really dived in on what are our essential standards. So when you go into any of our UPK rooms, you will see these standard, these centers in all of the classrooms. And then how do we integrate our word work and numbers within those centers while also giving students a chance to purposefully play? And what I mean by purposefully play is that we're down on the ground with them, and we're giving them the language to interact with each other, how to share, how to express, you know what, I would like a turn next. So we're very, we're crafting those prompts for them to kind of like come back to what that purposeful play looks like in our math and ELA centers.
And when they're playing, too, they learn that productive struggle, they learn turn-taking, all things they might not come in with. So when they're in their play centers, they have to ask to take a turn. You would think they might know that. The behaviors have really diminished during the play centers, because there's more free choice, and ELA and math are integrated inside those play centers, and like Jess said, that was direct feedback from one of the people from the UPK firm from the state.
So I would just say, like, I'll put on this plan, just to kind of like give you some, some more context into what we were looking at. So some of our feedback was that our centers are labeled appropriately, they come with learning statements, and so you can just kind of like see some recent evidence of how we shifted some things. So you can clearly see this is a library center, but it has no labels or no learning statements. So again, working as a team to dive deeper and making sure that we provide those labels with learning statements, and really, truly focusing on, are we hitting those essentials? So just a small example.
Any questions about PLCs before we move on from that, because we're going to move into more of...
So all of the UPK do this new process?
Yes.
Yes.
All of them?
And preschool.
Yep.
They meet weekly. I think I forgot that part. They meet weekly, they give 60 minutes a week, so four times a month, we meet with all our PLC groups.
Yeah, and so like, we've really shifted at looking at, what are the essentials when they walk in that building in September, or really what they need to know as a student, like how to walk in line, how to transition from the bus into the classroom, what does it look like to sit and be a listener, and to use our thinking power? So all of that, and then one other focus was, again, all the different stages of play, right? And really looking at where our kids are with that. So are they parallel playing? Are they both playing kind of next to each other? If they are parallel playing, what are the prompts that we're going to put into place to encourage them to now interact? Hey, what are you playing with? I want to play with you. So again, it comes back to giving them that language that they don't have yet, and better prepare them for that transition to kindergarten.
And exposing them to our Tier One programs and kindergarten, like foundations integrity.
Yes.
So they do get those. It's just a 10-minute exposure, but for the most part, it's, you know, it's play, but it's integrated inside the centers.
So that helps with their identification of letters, their letter formation, and also the numbers.
This is really great that we have this theme of safe and orderly, because I made quite a fight on that. So safe and orderly at Jackson looks a little bit different, but something that we're proactively doing all the time. So when we think about that, our mental health staff works with our kids on a nonstop basis. They're our right arms in terms of what we do all the time. So during our crisis calls, and any point where a student is in crisis, it is our social worker, our counselor, our school site, me and Mo going in separate directions, oftentimes multiple times a day. So I think that that's really the basis of where that begins. We're able to problem solve with teachers and with students on the spot for what they need, and we're able to then look at, what do you need right now? Do you need something from a counselor? Do you need something from an administrator? Do you need something that may or may not be a pullout of your classroom? Because we don't want to take away from that learning tag either. We created a crisis document, or a crisis documentation spreadsheet this year. We looked at our crisis calls last year, and we really weren't analyzing that data really well. I wanted to be able to look at it and be able to take that data to shared decision-making, for example, or to our SEL meeting, for example, and be able to use actual data as to why we're creating goals about things we're doing in our school. So instead of putting out those individual fires, we're able to put out those on a bigger scale, and be able to think more long-term, I guess. That's been really great. Teachers have reacted to that really well, because again, you can refer to actual data. You can look back and see that a certain student had 15 crisis calls in a three-month time period. You're able to look like, they separated by color, by who they need, so whether you need a counselor or administrator, or just some support as a teacher, which has been really nice, and then we can take that data and delineate it in terms of like what our goals look like. We're really close to Genesee County Medical Hall, so they come and report back on the students that they see. Obviously, they follow all protocols in terms of like compliance, but they're able to have that family-to-school connection, which is really nice. Our behavior consultant, Jen Wick, is really helpful in terms of these processes. We use her as a resource through the MTSS process, and she works closely with Kelly Marciano, our director of special ed, in helping with our special ed students as well in our special classes. We created a behavior flow chart this past summer as well. So I took a team, and actually, we took our SEL team and then a few other people, and they were able to look at what behaviors look like, and then where they go from where they stem, depending on the severity of the behavior and what that then looks like, which has been really great for teachers, because again, it's more clarification and more communication. That's really it. I guess we started this year with routines and procedures with more time in math, and that was really great. Instead of just doing things here and there when we needed it, and teaching, teachers teaching kids like in the moment, we like intentionally built lessons, mini lessons for them to use, with videos and with content, and that was really helpful. When we did our first observations this year, we were able to see that like students within the first three weeks of September knew what to do in the cafeteria, and they knew what to do in our classroom, they knew how to behave in certain spaces, we're getting those behaviors in certain ways because they're intentionally taught. Ooh, one last thing.
Okay.
Oh, this year, we have our SEL liaison, actually, which you can speak to. That's been really great in terms of this as well and being proactive.
Yep, so Kristi Sterling is our SEL liaison, classroom teacher that came out of the classroom, worked really hard to work on our monthly trace, you know, honesty, responsibility. She puts on full school assemblies for the kids. It's been, it's been a really nice connection with the kids. She helps all over, you know, she's just been really positive. So the SEL liaison really teaches, you know, those, you know, those strategies for students to calm down. It's a whole school language, green choices, red choices, whole body listening. So you'll hear, you know, you'll hear a drop-off parent saying, "Make, you know, make green choices today," and I was like, "Okay." Connecting to home, you know, that's always our hope, is that we can connect at home. We have seen an uptick in behaviors. We have, we have a lot of kids in crisis on a daily basis.
Can you tell me about, like, I'm thinking Jackson, Robert Morris, these are our little guys. So the crisis team, what is, can you explain that a little more?
Yeah, yeah, so we get, we're trained by GCIS, and so...
Do you know our GCIS lesson? Like, for them?
Yeah.
Yes, no? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
When Kristen says that we code them by color, so they might just need the support of a counselor if they miss their mommy, okay? Then we've got to send a counselor. Sometimes they're tipping desks over, or they're upset about something, and they can't, they can't say what's upsetting them, and we don't know. So sometimes we have to keep everyone safe, evacuate the classroom, and keep everybody safe, and try to use our techniques to de-escalate. So lots of times, the crisis team might, might respond, and maybe I'll get the parent on the phone, or maybe we'll connect them if they're outside there, because it just depends on what's going on in their little lives. There's times we get called, I don't know, three or four times a day, and then there's times we get called 30 times a day. We just don't know.
We don't sit at our desks.
So this, this crisis documentation spreadsheet, is that something that you can share with us? I'd be curious to see.
Yeah.
Like, because if you're telling me that's four times a day...
Oh, we use...
So if you, if you have, if you have a student in your class that's upset, and you, you wanted support, you would put in the document, and you would just color-code it, and then, you know, we do it after the fact, but we have radios, we're on the radio, who needs to respond, who doesn't? Sometimes they just need me to hug them and read them a book. Sometimes they need their parents to come calm them down. We just don't know, you know? We have high flyers, and we really try to work our, I try not to bother parents at work. I really do try to get through it with our crisis team, and we really can. Eight or 10 times, I think we do a nice job getting the child re-regulated and supporting the teacher, but sometimes it's a lot for the other kids in the classroom to see, so we'll maybe do a circle coming back in, but we keep it under, you know, under control, and then we just document everything. But we have seen an uptick in behaviors, especially this year.
So how long are these crises?
Depends on the crisis, depends on the kid.
As you mentioned, Krista, you're going in one direction, morning's going in the other.
Yeah, we have probably multiple days a week in which we are running all day. So we're running from one to the next, and it's the crisis with the student, and then it's the family communication, and then it's any problem solving that we need to do within that. We have anything, like she just said, with, "I need a hug," and "I'm crying for an hour," to "I'm destroying a classroom, and the class is being evacuated to the NPR." Mental health crisis, we had that this year, where a student needed to go to strong immediately, where the parent couldn't drive them, we had to call. So with anything from here to here, it just depends.
Yeah. Like, I would say, I had a two-hour one today, and it wasn't like a high-level crisis, like it started out with, just needed to like reset from the classroom. So sat with him in my office, gave him some time, then he's like, "All right, I gotta go for a walk." So we go for a walk, and he's like back and forth in the, in the hallway, doesn't know what he wants to do, then we go back to my office, and then we're knocking things down, and then it's like, "All right, let's go to the sensory room." And then within there, you know, you try a distraction and all different kinds of strategies to kind of like reset, set that center them, and then eventually, we just had to have mom come and get them, you know? And even with that, you know, it took mom a little bit to come and get them. So it just depends on the student and the time, especially at UPK level, that transition, even at Jackson, that transition for them is huge. And just depending on the student and the experiences that they bring to the school, transition can be a low-level, too, or it can be a 10, even at the primary level.
Yeah. And, you know, we have the behavior consultant that, that supports, who comes in and gives us things to do. Our teachers are amazing, the way they manage behaviors. They are miracle workers. I, I mean, we set students up for success, we think we place them perfectly in classrooms, and then we're like, "Oh, that didn't work." But our teachers work really hard every day with, and this is actually what the next slide is about. These are kind of all the things that we do to keep students regulated. We have calm-down corners mostly in every room. We have first-then lords, like, you know, you'll hear a teacher say, "First math, then play," in very basic language for students. You know, visual schedules, so they know what's next. We have kids, they're getting, you know, earning stars and stickers and things every 20 minutes, which is a good student. You can see, you know, just visual things, first-then tokens, calm-down, sensory rooms, social stories. Yeah. Trying to keep everybody safe.
With that chief's stuff on.
Can we bring Chaz over to that calm-down corner with all his chief's gear tonight?
No. You know, even in going in the calm-down corner, you gotta know how to use that, because a lot of strategies, and you don't always know. So especially at this age level, you know, developmentally, they only act, they're accessing that emotional part of their brain, and that's like their first, like, access. So we have to build in those strategies that allow them to then come into that logic part of their brain. So we always say, connection and then correction. A lot of times, if you start correcting the student at that level, you're going to have an escalated response, because they're not there, they're accessing their emotional part of their brain versus that logic. So a lot of these strategies is allowing us to get them to that. Some kids, it's five minutes, some kids it's two hours.
Just depends.
It just depends, yep.
Any other questions? You want to come to this?
Yeah, I'm coming out.
So, okay, and then, so we'll be, and then we try to now get them regulated, so they can really learn and really, you know, hone in on what they need to do. So this is all the data collection that we take at UPK K1. So in the beginning of the year, we do a Berdant screening, we do a mid-year progress monitoring, our students get to dial four, they get the dibbles, they get, they get math screener, the IREDI diagnostic, they get a decimining to assess their social, emotional, and we have regional assessments. So we track everything all the way up to create this beautiful literacy profile to send on to the next grade level. So UPK gives it to K, K gives it to one of them, we go vertically up through John Kennedy. And we use this data to look and see, you know, what do kids need, how do we intentionally group them? We have mid-module assessments, end module assessments, we're doing PLC, WIN groups, and taking the data from those groups. This is what a cohort spreadsheet looks like. This is just a example of what we collect. All the things on this slide go into here. So every student in every class, every year, just today, we were looking at data from a math module to figure out why students fell down on a math two module, and what, what we can do, what happened last year versus this year, and how we could be intentional to make sure that they all get to that 80% to move on.
I'm just going to look at like UPK preschool. Again, it's really like the heartbeat of what we're doing in PLCs. I know there's some data, we collect so much data, too. We also have to talk about, you know, what is that essential piece that's really driving our next SMART goal, right? And, you know, looking at what might be a little excessive, but as much data as we, as much data as we can, we do, we do collect, it's useful academically, behaviorally.
Holding scissors, cutting straight, you know, tracing, those are letters in and out of order, all kinds of things.
So in this, in this graph here...
Go back.
Yeah. Sorry. Let's, you tested this child, and for his shapes, he or she got six out of six? Is that how it's read?
Yeah.
So if somebody, like in the next group, the next one is two out of six, then that means...
Well, if you look in November, we did, so in the middle, so then we do a screener in the middle, so they had two out of six shapes in September, and then, then they got five out of six shapes.
Okay.
So that shows the progression...
Yep.
...of what they learn.
Okay.
And they do those things in the centers. So you'll see a play center, but it would have shapes in it, or might have... Numbers in it, or letters in it. This is just an example. So they'll know, they'll know in the mid, when they test it in the mid, what they need to do, what they need to work on. Kids really don't know their phone number anymore...
Right.
Because of cell phones, but the Brigance test still tests it, but, you know, phone numbers changed, they don't know their phone numbers. It's kind of like an arcade.
Yeah, so like the Brigance kind of get, the Brigance data will give us like, where are they cognitively right now, developmentally, for their age level, and then the teacher assessments, when you're looking at like the numbers, the shapes, and the letters, that's the teacher assessment that's driving that instruction in the classroom, and then also what that center work looks like. And then, like, for students that may not be progressing that fast, all right, that's where that win kicks in. Well, how are we going to give that student what they need, because what's happening right now isn't working? So how do, how do we make it look different?
And also holding scissors, like OTPT, speech, you'll find those things out with the screener, too. So when we do pre-K screening and kindergarten screening, we have those related service providers there. We have a counselor, OTPT speech, so we can hit them early and get, get them right into those services to catch them up. Like I said, some kids don't have any school experience.
Yes.
Any other questions about that? Okay. So this just brings us, this was something that I just got from Solution Tree when we had a session on Thursday. It was a really good session, and it talked about Tier One, how Tier One relates to the best first instruction, and so now in PLCs, teachers are collaborating in Tier Two, how can they work together to make sure what, every kid gets what they need? And then that Tier Three, the bottom part of the pyramid, that might be something where, you know, it's a significant gap in learning, and what do we do to make sure that we close that gap, so we don't leave them behind when we move on? That might look like another provider, I can give you an example of a Tier Three. We had a group of kids that didn't know zero through five, so we found that out from our common assessment, we figured out who it was, we asked the special area teachers, they do some push-ins during the day, to be super intentional about those kids, so they picked them up, and they teach them zero to five, zero to five. They just hammer it, they let them trace it, they let them, you know, they use any kind of manipulative that they can. And then we have a couple AIS teachers that support them, and then they give them that assessment again, and they caught them up. So we're really using every single person. Our custodian was running a win group for math a couple weeks ago, so.
I was gonna say, it could look as informal as, oh, this kid's done with lunch, and we have some flashcards, let's sit and like whip out the flashcards. And it's an opportunity not only to work on numbers, shapes, letters, but also, let's learn how to play a game, right? Let's learn how to interact. And so it could be that informal too, to help catch those tiers, like a tier three in activity.
When our students are showing growth in this model, they then get referred to MTSS, so multi-tier systems of support. We then are able to create individual goals for each of those students and track them even more closely to see what they need, to see whether or not they can stay in MTSS and then reach their goals, and maybe it's a specific area that they just needed extra support. Or if there are students who's a candidate to have an evaluation for CSE or an IEP or above the four. But we have all of that data to be able to support us in whichever way we decide to go.
And I talked about the cross-curricular today when I walked into special area of teachers were meeting. So it was library, music, they were talking about, so they know the standards that the first grade, that first grade's working on. So they just finished a measurement unit. So the PE teachers did a measurement game. So they're just trying to, everybody's just all in, trying to support all of learning and what kids need. So they know exactly where they are and what they're doing. They follow the same process as the grade level.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are all the parents involved in any of this?
Yes.
I mean.
I know, it's a good question. We talked about that today, shared decision-making.
If you have a child, a student, then.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I forgot to get a whole slide on this, sorry. So our parents are our first line, right? So like, they're the first line of, a teacher is like, I'm very, I'm concerned about this student in this particular place, they're our first line. So they call, talk about home, talk about where the student is, talk about the progress they're making. And then after that, we go from there, depending on what they need. Sometimes it's just extra support at home, depending on if they need support from our social worker, counseling, or that sort of thing. Other times, it's more of a formal recommendation to MTSS, to think about math AIS or reading AIS, or to think about tier three support, where we're able to pull our math and reading AIS teachers and have kids taken one-to-one, which has been really nice. But parents are always at the beginning of that whole process. And then some parents are like, nope, we trust you, we're good, like, give us updates. Other parents are like, I would prefer to be at every meeting, which is great, we can have that conversation as a team.
And they do send things home. Foundations has something called a Fun Hub. So anything that they're working on in tier one instruction for ELA and reading, they can send, they can send it home to the parents too. So we do have, our parents are involved all along the way. So this is just the profile I was talking to you about. Everything gets loaded onto there for UPK all the way up, just everything, all of those assessments that I talked to you about, the brigands, the dial, their foundations, union assessments, their math assessments. You can look at that, it shows how they grow.
This is the best part, our baby's in action.
Yeah. This is win, so this is a kindergarten win group, they're working on a math standard. You know, everybody's at, that's the teacher right on the left, the kids are all working, they do it for 20 minutes at different times throughout the day. Our coaches extend the learning for some of our groups, but this is what they do. I mean, they, it's not just all testing, they have a lot of fun, they learn a ton. I try to make it a magical experience, all while making sure that every student gets what they need, and making sure that, you know, leave anybody behind, and that we believe everybody can learn, and help all of our students to really, really love school, and help them understand, you know, their learning, but maybe they don't realize they are, they're still having fun. So we're data, 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 but they're learning, learning, fun. Like I said, our teams are amazing.
So the kids don't know you're testing them all the time?
They, they, well, they make it fun, they make it fun.
I wouldn't say we're testing them all the time.
I just sound like we are because of what we collect. But if we don't, then we don't know how to share and make it better. So like, one teacher may have great data on measurement, and somebody might not, and they can get together and say, what did you do on question four? You know?
We are starting our extended day program in the next couple of weeks, actually next week. Our extended day program is for students who need just a little extra support, just an extra hour. We don't run it like traditional schools, so it's more, so they get snack, they have more centers that are built into what they need, they get one-to-one support from teachers. We had 52 kids who were recommended a couple weeks ago. I can't imagine we'll have that number in terms of how many students are able to attend. So we'll mainly keep the numbers low, which is nice, like probably 10 or less kids per teacher, which is great, they get that one-to-one attention. And then extended year is the same thing, we're just able to give kids that experience. I found last summer that a lot of kids not only needed the academic support, but they needed the structural support. So like, they really needed that, like, I wake up, I get ready, I get moving, I eat breakfast, I go to school. They enjoyed that part, so it was great on both ends. Anybody have questions about either of those programs?
So that's a, that's a plug for all your own school.
I don't know.
Well, it does feed it.
Our kids love school, they would come on, they would. Okay, so this is just like how we try to build a community of learners. We take into account SEL, we do, we do a lot of collaborations, the soccer team visited and raised money, bought every child a book, we have Glenn Colton come in for character education, we have curriculum nights, Circle Up, Community Helper, our Fall Festival, Turkey Trot, our coloring contest, we have Bouncy the Dog, you'll see him there, he's a program for SEL where students nurture this dog, and it teaches them how to calm down. Bouncy's really cute. Shared decision-making, that's our home connection. That's where, you know, we did ornaments to celebrate different traditions and cultures. We do different things throughout the month. March, we'll send a shamrock home, have the students fill out why they have an important woman in their life, we'll do the same thing during Father's Day month. We have Ag in the classroom, we have the VEA, lots of parent involvement, tons of fundraisers, Easter Bunny pizza fundraiser, Breakfast with Santa, make teacher night, a lot of our teachers show up and our kids come. So this is what it's all about. Hunting Zoo at Robert Morris, Community Helper Day, Santa Comes, I mean, the smiles on their faces are priceless, so our kids have a really good time. I send out a weekly wrap every week for teachers to see what's going on with upcoming dates. I do, I am still doing a monthly parent newsletter. I do get people that read it, I, I used to love it when my daughter was in school, kind of gives them an idea of what's going on, UPK K1. I give little examples of what we're doing, upcoming events, and always, you know, open communication. I have parents message me on Facebook, they call the office, I, I mean, parents don't have any problem contacting any of us. They definitely call me right up, so. Thank you for your support, especially with Robert Morris. I have to tell you, it's been lovely running one building. Jess and I are in close contact, as you see, I still call her and say, did you remember? Hey, so I didn't set her totally free, so thank you for that support. It's made our life a lot easier and really intentional. And then last year, I showed you this, this was just a sketch that we partnered with Go Art, it was just a sketch then, and now it's on the wall.
It's so good.
Just shows, it takes a village of all of our different Community Helpers. The owl in the front is supposed to be echo from our foundations program, and just our mantra, be respectful, be safe. Sorry, that took a long time. Questions for us?
Nice job, thank you. Thanks, Elise.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, curriculum and instruction update, Dr. Corey. Thanks.
Take care. Bite the shirt.
So it was helpful to have them go first because they really shared a lot about what's happening in our schools that I'm gonna talk about at kind of a broader scale. You know, our strategic plan really is a living document that's living and breathing in the schools. And we added a second graphic this year just to help define how we're doing that with a couple of the goal areas. It's important to think about safe and orderly, and that lives through our SEL teams and with the shared decision-making team. Collaborative culture kind of hits everything, and then curriculum and instruction really lives with what the instructional leadership team does. We started a guiding coalition team in each school around that, and we have a district guiding coalition team that helps to kind of check the pulse from other people just randomly kind of in the district. It's helpful to know what's really happening, and I think that what you'll hear from me is that there are some visible evidence pieces that you can see, not only in the structures of what the schools are doing, but I would say in the data in classrooms based on the work that's happening. We're in year two, as they shared with you. We were fortunate to go this summer to Rochester to, with a very large team. We asked every school to pick who would be important to go to really get the work moving, and we had almost 40 people there. We came together and took a picture at the end. We have two coaches that we're working with from Solution Tree. Barb is gonna be here this Thursday and Friday helping us, she's a New Yorker. She lived, she currently lives in the Binghamton area and worked for a district down there that's known as a model district. She's really taken, to become a model district, it means you have to have more than one school that's a model PLC school, and there's certain things you have to hit to get there. They have different things you can apply for as you work, do this work, and it's kind of an honor from the company, but it really stands for, we're doing this work and it's living and breathing in our schools. In year two, the focus is around assessment, so you heard a lot of conversation around what we do with that. And basically, what we want is for them to realize that, is they can change what's happening on the trajectory of with kids learning in their classrooms. If you counted the number of standards we have, there's thousands, honestly, if you add them up across K-12. But even in a grade level, there's a significant number, and, you know, narrowing that focus to be intentional things that we want to see kids doing, we, we track that and watch that to make sure that we're getting the results that we want. You know, it sounds a little simplistic to see about kids learning their shapes and knowing where they were, but the reality is, every grade level has those focus areas and tracks them and watches them over time. And we're, we're growing at slow and steady, and I would, at the elementary level, we really, we started with math, that was our major focus area. Elementary teachers teach so much across the day, to ask them to do this work for every single subject just didn't make sense. We wanted to learn how to do this work, and then we'll add in different subject areas. And it really is a partnership, you know, there's the school board, it comes with you believing in what we're doing, honestly, that helps to make it happen. What we set as goals here trickles into what the schools are doing, and then into the teams. I know that the teachers sitting here could speak to the work that they talk about with their teams, and how they see it impacting what they do each day in the classroom. It's exciting to see the progress that we made. We took all of the recommendations from Solution Tree, and we put it into a survey, and this is from our guiding coalition team, we asked them, you're into it, you know, where do you see what's happening? Honestly, there's just classroom teachers there, it's, it's not always the leaders. And we're green in every category, which is a good sign, but it represents areas that we have to keep working on as well. The, the pink is the not yet. So we've got some goal areas that we'll keep working on to move this work forward. Our hope is that if we use this as like the ones that you're baseline, we'll see that more green is growing and we're eliminating the pink. Our work isn't done, it's, it's learning the system and then really refining that system to really make it better. But I'm excited that I do think we have some clear data points to tell us that we're trending in the right direction. We have a Batavia curriculum site where we're housing a lot of this work. The summer, JK teacher worked on making this common agenda, it was one of her projects she's learning about administration in her administration course where she had to do some tasks. All of the agendas are located on this curriculum site. So it's pretty cool to see, we could, at any given point, look at one and see what's happening, when are they meeting, what are they talking about, what data points are collected in there, and it's going well. On top of that, we're adding in the intentional resources we want them using. I would skip out of here to show you what it looks like, but it's, it's a work in progress that truly is growing. The area that you guys kind of will look to judge us on has always been the three-three testing. It's pretty, it's an area that they, they highlight every year, it makes the news, it helps us to earn some awards, we're based on that. So it is an important metric that I would say is really more of a summative, it's how did the kids do after having schooling for that school year? New York State has a memo and really talks about what's happening with testing, and there's a big shift to computer-based testing, it's, it's been coming. We were slow to move into it, I'll be honest deliberately, I, I don't know that taking a test on the computer is the right thing. It's easier for the adults to manage, and it gives us results. But the reality is, when you're reading and writing and thinking and solving math problems, I think it's challenging to show all that you're doing in there. This year, where the state's kind of forced the card, we have to jump to CBT. Last year, we did two grade levels, fifth and seventh, or fifth and eighth, which were required, this year, everybody's jumping in. I know from looking at scores around the state that usually there's an implementation dip, and we're trying really hard to teach kids to be responsible in that regard so that hopefully we won't see an implementation dip. There's some things that we can do to help with that, and I know that the teachers are working hard. One of the big things, I, I'll be honest, is some, that analysis, I like the teachers to see how the kids responded in the test book, but you have to download the CBT results one at a time. It took my new secretary who was learning things, but I gave her that as a job because in between what I could give her, and it took her three full days to do two grade levels. That's crazy. I went to a meeting with New York State, and I told them, you know, we'll move to it, but can you help us out? Because, you know, looking at what students do, it matters to us. You know, we use that information to see how are they showing their thinking? And, you know, we, we want to know that, you know, we're helping them to be the best that they can be. So, to the results. For ELA, which I will start with, we haven't added that in as a PLC for K4. They started with math, they're, they're doing well with math, and we will add it in. We have made some strategic changes in ELA though, programmatically with science of reading. You know, you heard Mo talk a little bit about foundations and the work that kids are doing with learning to read, but we're seeing the needle really tick in that area. IReady was a result, another assessment that we've used. We've eliminated by fourth grade the basic phonemic awareness and phonological, they all got it, according to that, which is a really good shining star for us. If I showed you data from five years ago, we knew something was wrong because kids didn't have that. So we have two grade levels that showed improvement as that grade level in ELA. I'll go back and show you where it is longitudinally for that grade level. Cohort-wise, we have three grade levels making progress. The fourth graders, last year from third to fourth showed improvement, the sixth graders showed improvement, and the eighth graders showed improvement. I think we'll start to see things trend higher, especially when we move into the PLC realm with that. And I think that as more kids, like, we're just now, that we started that correction with the phonemic awareness and phonics, there are now third graders that have had full implementation, so they're just now coming into that testing world where they're showing us that they can read. If I go back, I have to actually take this off to show you, I didn't want you to just see the results. The results honestly are a little bit loaded in, in some ways, for a few reasons. One, COVID truly did change a lot of things, and coming back out of COVID, some of the testing was just released questions. I would say that, and now we're in the tests for new standards, so it's hard to say where are we really at when there's been so many variables that have changed in that testing world. Part of that state memo was, don't compare the results from previous years. Well, we always like to compare the results from previous years. I can say that I think we're at least back where we were before COVID hit, and I think that we're, we really are trending in the right direction. And then if you look at our cohorts, you can see the cohorts are starting to make good progress in ELA.
So that percentage is the percentage of students in, let's say, in English Language Arts for the 23, 24, that in third grade, 40% of the students, it's this graph?
Yeah, 40% earned R3 or a 4.
Yeah.
Proficient.
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 Yep. If you compare us with small cities, which is what we've always done, we're making really good progress with ELA. You can see that we're still tied in first for third, first and fourth. Fifth grade increased to first, and eighth grade helped first. Sixth and seventh, sixth is still in the top three. Seventh grade is one that I'm working closely with Dr. Krine to look carefully at what's going on. Seventh grade, I'll be honest, the kids, that's the year that they kind of just don't care. They know what middle school's like. It doesn't matter to them. And sometimes you see that, and you can see it, you'll see it in our results a little bit. So we want to figure out what we can do to hook them. When we look at our trending results for ELA over time, we're still first. And compared to all of the small cities that we compare ourselves to, our rankings have increased over time. And we're a few percentage points ahead for overall, that I think that's pretty good. So I think we'll see that we'll start to increase even more when we get into the PLCs for ELA at elementary. For math, the results show a lot more promising results, and I would say it's because of the work that we're doing with PLCs. Math's a little, it's concrete. I think it's a little bit easier to see what are you doing, not doing. Reading, there's so many little pieces. What makes a great reader? I promise, between foundations and wit and wisdom, we're seeing some incredible things in the classrooms. When you look overall with the results here, we have made increases in that grade level in four out of the six classrooms. Great deal. Nick, can you lift the? Thank you. When we look at the results over time from there, our shining stars, fourth grade, the awards that are up on the wall, their dedication to math, they were doing really well before COVID. And when COVID hit, we saw a pretty big dip, but we're seeing that they've come back and they've come back even stronger. What I can tell you about that statistic is that 75% has a very large percentage of students from poverty that are doing very well. So we're going to receive more accolades from that once people analyze the data. We had fifth grade showed progress over time. Sixth grade increased, and so did seventh. Eighth grade has a mix of kids with algebra, and so the results didn't show. But overall, I'm very pleased with the math results. When we look at cohorts, the fourth graders from 67 to 75, and you can see sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade made growth in what they're doing. I would say that that's a little evidence of PLC stuff. We're really just getting into it in the middle school with all the changes that we've had. They started this year anchoring in behaviors. They came together and used the PLC, the four questions, to really get the school where they wanted it to be. And that's working. And now they're moving into the academics. When Dr. Krine is able to really help influence what's happening with the teen meetings on academics, I think we'll see that more results start to come. When we compare ourselves against the small cities, you can see that we're first in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, which I think is pretty good. It shows the momentum growing. Seventh is an anomaly we've got to get after and figure out what's going on there. Eighth is third. To be in the top three for small cities, I think is pretty good. We look at our results over time, we're in first as well. And I think we have a significant lead again, if you look at where we are compared to the others. And what I, if you show over time, we're trending, slow and steady wins the race. You know, it's not stuff that happens overnight. It takes that slow, methodical progress, and we have the dedication from many teams to help with that. I think we have a lot of successes. You know, we increase our results in several grade levels, and we improved our rank in the small cities in some really tricky areas. You know, if you remember last year, fifth grade was a focus area, and now they're number one in small cities. We want to continue to foster the collaboration and celebrate those successes along the way. I've picked off, PLC says celebrate, celebrate often, and they use what's called praise walks to do that. And that's taking hold in the schools. We had a praise parade where, once we knew the fourth graders how well they did, we'd have them and fifth graders make posters for their teachers, and they walked, they went to all the schools and showcased that. It was very well received. It made everybody feel really good about what was happening. We're using that same approach. John Kennedy had praise walks where teachers were watching other teachers just in the last two weeks, and maybe posters on the doors. It's really cool to see what other people recognize when they go into classrooms to see that happening. We're going to grow that and continue to foster that as well. It's not just academics, though, as you've heard from Mo. There's a lot of things going on in our schools. And I'd say all of our schools. And the SEL liaison's really helped with that. It was a strategic move to use some of the grant funds in a different way. It's not something you see in every school. The intention is to explicitly teach those softer skills that we want kids to have. And they've added key instruction. You know, it's a special in some places, and there's extra support so that hopefully kids learn how to regulate themselves. I've observed teachers who are teaching that. I've seen it in the classroom, and I think it really truly is helping them so that the shift back to harder academics with the classroom teacher can happen. If the child doesn't want to be there and decides to derail the classroom, it can impact everybody. And we're trying how to be proactive with that and teach them to understand what's going on. We have extended-day programming that we're using also in a strategic way. We want to use the funding sources to really help. Twenty First Century is shifting. We'll have some tutoring aspects for it. And principals are having some groups in some needed areas based on the data sheets that they see. We have SOAR, which has smaller ratios, that has a math focus, and that's intention, hook kids into wanting to come to school and be a part of what we do. And then my brother's keeper has really taken off this year and is doing some pretty cool things. You've probably seen them in the media. I think that everybody has something to connect with in the schools. You know, it's slow and steady. It's prioritizing what matters with our funding sources and with what we want to be focusing on in school that's making that slow and steady change. The first thing that schools can apply for is called Promising Practices. I've had two principals tell me that they want to have model PLCs as their school. They want, they want to win that award. To do that, they have to apply for the Promising Practices. One school's going to fill up an application this week. And so it's neat to see, you know, people coming together. And it's not just a principal applying for it. It has to be that guiding coalition team that comes together and tells the story of what they're doing to change the pace of what's happening in their school. It's pretty neat to watch it happen. Every school is doing something with it. It's slow and steady. It's a little bit harder in others, and some are going to have to be some changes in scheduling, you know, to truly have what, everything that you need to help kids that are either falling behind and needing supports, or I would say even needing some extensions.
A lot of information.
Thank you, Dr. Corey. Right next, 2025-26 Budget Overview. Mr. Wang?
All right. This is the first installment of our budget presentations that we'll have for this year, for the 25-26 budget year. And just to go over a little agenda today, we'll go over the budget calendar briefly. We'll look at estimated revenue that we have, the information we have at hand right now, as of current. We'll look at the maximum allowable tax levy calculation, which is the tax cap. We really won't go deep into the calculation right now, but we have a preliminary total tax cap that we can, we can try at this point. And then we'll look at appropriations. So anticipated expenditures for the 25-26 school year from central office, operations, maintenance, transportation, and debt service. So this year, we're going to try to break up the budget into sections so we can kind of go into detail during these presentations and talk about the differences from year to year of the budget. And then we'll look at a total overall current draft appropriation status summary, and then total budget summary, and then we'll open up any questions. So the calendar today, we're going to be looking at obviously operations, maintenance, debt, transportation, and revenue. The next meeting on February 24th, we'll look at preliminary, again, the preliminary budget overview, including special education, instruction, BOSI's programming, and benefits. March 10th, we'll have a budget work session, which will look at kind of the final draft of the budget as it stands. And then the 24th, we'll continue to review the budget and make changes as needed. And then the 21st, we're looking for the Board of Education to complete their review and adopt the budget. Obviously, May 5th, we'll distribute a public budget document to the public so they can review it prior to the budget and Board of Education vote. And then the 12th, we'll have a presentation of the final budget, a budget hearing. And then the actual budget vote during that day at 6:00 PM, or the budget hearing will be at 6:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room, and then the actual vote will be May So we'll start off by looking at projected revenue. So the four main, three main sources of revenue the district receives are state sources in the form of state aid, real property taxes, appropriated fund balance, and then other revenue. Those are other ancillaries to our revenues that we receive, at least tuition, things like that. So as you can see, from year to year, we're looking at some quite significant increases, mainly in the area of state aid. And we'll kind of dive into that a little bit closer in a subsequent slide. But you see an overall budget-to-budget increase of over 7% in state aid. And again, we'll look at that a little bit closely, a little bit closer in a subsequent slide, but certainly right now is a good state aid run, as we would say. Real property taxes, this is the current a maximum allowable tax cap. So you recall the 2% tax cap, it's actually a calculating amount. This year, we are preliminarily calculating it to be about 2.36%. So that's what we currently have included in this draft of the budget. It can obviously be changed and be moved through the budget process, but currently we're showing a 2.36% increase in the overall tax levy, which equates to about $480,000 in total. Appropriated fund balance, the last budget, the last board meeting, we had a presentation regarding the long-range financial plan. Part of that plan was to reduce the amount of reliance the district has on appropriating fund balance to balance its budget. So this budget can accomplish that. So what we have done currently is reduce the amount of appropriated fund balance significantly by over a million dollars, which means that we are not appropriating, taking from our savings account to balance next year's budget. So this is in alignment with that long-range financial plan, as well as in alignment with recommendations from our external auditor. Other revenue, we're looking at some increases. A lot of the increase from this other revenue, one of the other revenue sources is earnings, interest earnings. So the district did really well on its interest earnings last year. We project that continues. We've made some changes to some investment strategies and in consultation with the Audit Committee and the Board. So a lot of that has paid off. So we're looking at some additional interest earnings, which we can anticipate for the 25-26 school year as well. So looking at state aid, as you can see, these are all the different areas of state aid that we receive, starting with foundation aid. You can see this is the largest increase. It's kind of why it's highlighted. And I do have a slide on this additionally further in the presentation, but there was some proposed changes by the Rockefeller Institute. And some of those changes that were implemented, we believe may have assisted in increasing the amount of foundation aid that the district anticipates to receive in the 25-26 school year. Building aid, this is based on the amount of debt service that we have. Again, you'll see that we are having some debt fall off. That has some impacts, not only on the tax levy, but also on the amount of building aid we receive. So we're anticipating some reduction in building aid there. Transportation aid, our transportation costs have increased as a result of our new contract with our transportation provider. And so we are anticipating receiving additional state aid for next year as well in transportation. That's an expenditure-based aid. So how much we spend this year, we get a percentage of that back in the following year. So we anticipate spending more than we have in the past, so we anticipate receiving more than we have in the past as well in transportation. Public and private access cost aid, this is for students who aren't private or public special ed placements, and we receive additional state aid as a result of those placements. And that's relatively stable from previous years. Categoryable aid, these are again expenditure-driven, but by per pupil allocation, so the state provides a certain amount of money per student for these types of, this type of aid for tax books for libraries and hardware and software. And so again, that's relatively stable as well. A slight increase in BOSI's aid budget-to-budget, just based on additional BOSI services, you know, students receiving BOSI services throughout the district, programs and software and hardware that we purchased through BOSI's. So again, that's, we anticipate receiving a little more BOSI's aid as well. Overall, year to year, a 7.18% increase in total state aid, which equates to $2,358,000 year to year. So that was budget-to-budget. This is enacted to budget its state aid, so this is what we are actually receiving this year, what we anticipate we'll actually receive this year, and this is what we're budgeting for the 25-26 school year. So it's very similar. You know, we are anticipating, we did budget a little less than we, than we anticipated receiving in building aid. Again, what we want to be careful is budgeting more revenue than we're actually receiving. So we wanted to make sure to realistically estimate the amount of building aid, the amount of transportation aid, all of these different category aids, but we didn't want to overestimate the amount of aid as well. So you can see relatively minor differences, but the big ones still being foundation aid. We're definitely actually receiving quite a bit more foundation aid than we anticipate receiving this year. So looking at the governor's proposal for foundation aid, a little bit more indethly. Some of the language we're including in this was a minimum which is a 10% increase for all districts. And then the second point here is where we believe the district is receiving additional foundation aid. We have a larger number of students who have extraordinary, extraordinary need, an extraordinary need count, it increased significantly, and we believe that is the main driver for the increase in foundation aid. So we've been in contact with Quest, our state aid planning, and they are kind of looking at the data closely to receive these funds last Tuesday. And preliminarily, that's what we believe resulted in the increase in foundation aid. So they identified that we have more students here that have extraordinary, extraordinary need, and that increased the amount of total foundation aid the district's anticipating to receive in 25-26. Looking at the tax levy, right now, I'm showing a $480,000 increase in the tax levy in this draft of the budget. Again, that's a 2.36% increase. This is the historical total tax levy, and then they changed the tax levy over all of these years. On average, we are still below 2% on average for the past three years, and then well below 2% as we go back in years. So all the way back to 13-year average, we're only increasing the tax levy by $206,000 or just a little over 1%. So other revenue sources, you can see minor adjustments as we analyze previous year's actual earnings and then project it forward. But you can see a lot of it has to do with the interest earnings. We're anticipating receiving additional $250,000 next year in interest earnings, just based on what we're seeing from prior year. And then finally, reserves and appropriated fund balance, we already kind of touched on this, but the district's long-range financial plan had us kind of stepping down the amount of appropriated fund balance that we were using to balance our budget. So you can see we decreased it by a little over 30%, a little over a million dollars to get us down to $2.5 million that we're actually appropriating for next year, which is certainly more fiscally responsible than continuing to kind of plug a hole with appropriated fund balance. That's kind of one of the things that we wanted to see moving forward. So with the current budget and the current foundation aid runs that we saw, this is certainly possible. Looking at projected expenditures, what we call appropriations. This is all the central office codes that we're seeing. I'm going to focus on some of those that we're seeing, you know, significant changes and variances in year to year. In the business office, we have some retirement contributions to afford to be for a retired employee that we are budgeting for here as well moving forward. And then we have some additional third-party software that we're using, including ad data for purchasing that we're implementing, things. employee that we are budgeting for here as well moving forward. And then we have some additional third-party software that we're using, including ad data for purchasing that we're implementing, things like that. As well in there, we have support staff for our central office, business administration staff, and things like that. Moving down, the other big change, public information services. The district started off doing more printing and newsletters, and so we're putting the contractual cost of those printed newsletters in public information, we're just quoting those to what we call a public information section. So that portion of the budget has been adjusted accordingly. Maintenance of plant, so we've been working with our director of facilities, Chad Bliss, to create a, not only a replacement cycle for all of our equipment, but also a maintenance cycle to take care of those preventive maintenance items like parking lot sealing and gym floor renovation. So he's put together a, a schedule of which gym floors we're going to be doing, which parking lots we're going to be doing. We're trying to do a couple each year.
Boiler repair?
Boiler repair, yeah, that could, that is, boiler repair is in there as well, yes. But these, these scheduled items are, are supposed to be done just to kind of get ahead of preventing maintenance, so our parking lots don't fail, so our equipment doesn't fail when we need to sew around, things like that. So we've been working really closely with Chad, he's done, he's developed a great plan, and that's where you're seeing an increase in the maintenance of plant line as well. Most of it is equipment, some of it is contractual cost for like gym floor finishing, things like that. And then other than that, it's a relatively insignificant increases, except for a lot of them are, are based on contractual obligations that the district has. But overall, just a little over 3.3% increase year to year in central services, maintenance, and operations. District transportation, so here's an area that we're anticipating quite a big increase in. We were notified earlier in the calendar year, right, actually in December, that our transportation provider that helps us with our special education transportation, those are students that are going to outplacements, like, you know, fall and things like that, that he's most likely not renewing a contract for next year, and that the district would have to go out to bid. As we saw with our home-to-school transportation contract, we saw a significant increase. Although it's a smaller contract than regular home-to-school, we still anticipate a significant increase. So that's why you're, we're showing about a 10% increase overall in total contract transportation cost increase. That's in relation to just our regular home-to-school transportation, as well as our special education anticipated, increased cost of them beyond when we read that. So we're working diligently to finalize that, to make sure that that's, that is the plan, and we will have more information as we run, go through the budget process this year on that. Debt service, this is where we budget for our, for lack of a better term, our mortgage or our long-term debt on our capital projects. You can see that we have some significant drop-off in debt service that we talked about, that's why we're showing a low decrease in building aid. And this does two things. It, it, the biggest issue that it has is it impacts the district's tax cap. When we don't have what's called an exclusion, a capital exclusion, the district is limited at the amount it can increase its taxes. It negatively impacts the tax cap. We wouldn't be able to increase the tax cap or the levy as much as we could because we're having a drop-off of the amount of what we call a local share. So the combat that, we worked with our municipal advisors to increase the amount that we are transferring to the current capital project, or the cash transfer, we would call it, an inter-fund transfer, and that helps us maintain a stabilized tax levy. So we're not having only a 1% or a half a percent increase in the tax cap, we have up to a 2.36% increase in the tax cap. So we budgeted an additional inter-fund transfer. The good thing that we can do, the good thing that this does is decreases the amount that we borrow for that project, decreases our interest costs for that project, and helps us really maintain a no impact, no additional impact to the tax. So this is an overall summary of the year-to-year revenue and expenditures for the 2025-26 current draft of the budget. You can see I'm projecting a total expenditure of $62,579,000. That's a 3.79% increase year to year. And then you can see total revenue, $62,579,000. Again, that's a 3.79% increase in revenue. So right now, as this current draft is, there is no gap, it's a balanced budget. This is again, a first draft of the budget. It does include contractual increase for personnel, things like that. So this is a rollover budget with additional contractual obligations put into it. So as we stand right now, we have a balanced budget, and again, a lot of that is attributed to the increase in, in state aid that we are assuming for the 2025-26 school year. So in summary, the total amount of the general fund is, right now, $62,579,000. That's a 3.79% increase. The tax levy currently, again, at the cap, the 2.36% increase in the tax levy, which is a little over $480,000, is within the maximum, the current maximum allowable tax levy calculation, and we'll continue to review that as we go through the budget process and update the board as needed. But we're pretty confident in that tax, total tax cap numbers as it stands right now. So really, that's it. Any, any questions at this point?
So you would say that the Institute, Rockefeller Institute, did do some good by reviewing the foundation aid equation?
I'd say the governor chose to implement some of the recommendations that have positively impacted our district in foundation aid. I can't say that across the board for every district, but certainly it, I think it better represents the poverty count that we have here in our district, which has impacted the increased amount of foundation aid the district can potentially receive.
And isn't, wasn't that a complaint by many districts in the state that they wanted the governor to look at the districts themselves and their poverty rate versus whether they lost students enough?
Sure, and that's, that's maybe a factor here, is that was one of the recommendations the governor felt was, would benefit most districts, that they had a better realization of level of poverty than they had last year. Any other questions? Yeah, I'll just add, as we move forward with the budget process, we'll continue to refine, so the total amount of the general fund may change, you know, but at this point, it's, it's pretty accurate. But if any changes or additions to the budget as we go through the budget process, we'll update, you know, as we go through the total budget process for each presentation, so. All right?
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy. All right, next up, superintendent's report. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just a few items to share with the board. I want to recognize our Rock Band program, that was recognized last Saturday at Elba for receiving an Excellence in Student Service Award. I'll pass that down. Dan Gilroy was there with his students, and Allison was there as well. Also at the same breakfast as Andy, as, as Andy and Allison were talking about, we did speak to our legislators, as someone in Holly was there, Senator George Barello, and representatives from the federal offices of Schumer and Congresswoman Tenny. We spoke with them, advocated for our schools and districts. So that happened last Saturday. Allison, anything you wanted to add to that? You were there as well.
Only that Mr. Barello spoke about extensively about the possible walkback of the requirement of electric buses.
Yes.
Which doesn't, it impacts us as the people that lead, as the district that leases, rents the buses or whatever, we don't own them, it was more impactful for the schools there that have their own buses.
Well, it's also, to some degree, it's impactful for us too, because if, if the bus company has the electric buses, they're going to, they're going to pass that cost on to us. So it's definitely a positive thing, even though we don't own, we lease, it's still a positive thing for us. So that happened at Elba. I want to recognize Coach Brasky for earning his 500th win Friday night. I was there, it was a great night, it was a very close game, but they weren't sure they had the signs ready to show, but it was a fun night. A lot of his students came back to recognize him, and it was really, really a lot of fun. Sticking with athletics, we are in the process of recognizing our senior athletes in winter sports. We just had swimming last, earlier in the month, hockey was Saturday, wrestling is happening, I think, Tuesday night, and we have some more events to go, so recognize, recognition of our senior student athletes. Dr. Corey mentioned this in her report, our, my brother's keeper students at the middle school have been doing some wonderful projects. I brought them with me on the radio last week, where they very proudly talked about their service project they did on the Martin Luther King Day, which of course is a day off, but they came to school. And Dr. Corey worked with Kristen Gomez on that, and Dr. Crime, they did a fantastic job. They went to the Presbyterian Church, and they did, this is really kind of cool, they did circle groups with residents of 400 towers, which is really kind of neat. And last week, I visited John Kennedy, they had their STEAM Day. What was neat about the STEAM Day, I was talking to the teacher, if you saw in, in the Batavia last week or so, they ran an article about one of our STEAM programs at the high school, and they quoted a student who was excited about this due to what he learned at John Kennedy, you know, at the STEAM program there. So it was, it was really a nice tie-in to see what's happening in fourth grade, all the way up through, through high school. And the article was in the paper last week, that class I'm talking about is Mr. Borhe's class that he teaches, it's a marketing class. And I observed it last week, the newspaper was there, and just the student in the newspaper talked about what he learned back in fourth grade, carried all the way through to 10th, 11th grade. Teacher was very excited to hear this, so that's part of the story for both the high school and John Kennedy on that, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, student ex-officiary report. Cam, you're up.
Yeah, that kind of covers a lot of what I wrote down.
Sorry, Cam.
No, you're good. But like due to winter break and midterms, there really aren't a lot of updates for me. I would like building with Health Academy stuff, but we kind of just dissected it hard today, I don't think anyone wants to hear about that. School safety procedures, because of the test in the previous week, student acted threat in the building. On behalf of the student body, I'd like to thank Ms. West and our security staff, the Batavia Police Department for acting quickly. Clubs continue as usual. E and E hockey, every day of basketball, we have many competitive games, notice the wording in that. Yeah, that's it.
Cam, thank you.
Thanks, Cam.
All right. Next up, consent grouping. I need a motion to approve the grouping of consent items. Miss Benedict, can I have a second?
Second.
Miss Benedict.
Call in favor? Any opposed?
All right. And our old business, approve the 2024-25 BCSD Code of Conduct with revisions as presented effective immediately. Could I have a motion? Mr. Roll, second.
Second.
Miss Anderson.
Call in favor?
Aye. New business, approve the internal audit, risk assessment, and corrective action plan for year ending June 30th, 2025, by Lumsden McCormick LLP Certified Public Accountants. Could I have a motion, please?
Boom.
Miss Benedict, second.
Second.
Miss Lynde.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next up, the administrative reports for curriculum operations and business are all online, please take a look at those at your leisure. Board goal updates, unfortunately, I do not have any updates. Does anybody else have any updates on our board goals? Is that at this time? All right. Any board members have any comments and news to share at this time?
I will also say about the legislative breakfast, although that, the two representatives from the federal part of the government, Claudia Tenny and Mr. Schumer, really didn't give us any input at all about what, what their thoughts are. Of course, it's very hard as a representative to speak as to how Mr. Schumer and Mrs. Tenny would actually react to a specific change in the law, but it was very disappointing, let's put it that way, but Mr. Barello was very enthusiastic, and I see him in the paper all the time, you know, so he is around Western New York, of course, he's from the Chalk area.
Down in Hurdoney, Duncan, I believe, yeah.
But he seems to be around Western New York, in the Batavia, Tennessee area quite a bit, so, and he seemed genuinely interested in what's going on. I did not attend the Mr. Holly session, so there were lots of people there, and it was, you know, it wasn't informative for Mr. Barello, but very disappointing, you know, with your representatives. Well-attended, everyone should go to the legislative breakfast, it's always nice to be able to talk to our representatives.
I was, I was upset I couldn't make it this morning, because it was, the last two times I went, it was, it was really good, it was very educational, I guess is what I would say. Anybody got anything else? No? All right. I'm going to need a motion to go into executive session, the board will not return to public session. Call for executive session, motion to move to executive session to discuss matters relating to the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and matters of student discipline or specific student placement and/or program, or that would otherwise disclose confidential, personally identifiable student information. Could I have a motion? Miss Lynde, and then Miss Benedict will be in.
Call in favor?
Aye.